I can now hear you, yes.
The floor is yours.
Okay. Brian, can you hear us as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
We ready for the update?
Can you guys still hear us?
I can hear it's Pam.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Brian Blair with campus, he just giving you guys a construction update. We'll go ahead and start in the auditorium. Lot of positive movement. The epoxy paint is actually complete in the auditorium. We are actively installing the auditorium seating, which will be completed by the end of the week. That space will then transition back over again to the GC. They'll start installing the curtains and drapes. And the carpet will also be completed by the end of the week. So for all intensive purposes.
It's going through. It's system. Because I can hear it fine.
Brian, go ahead. Okay. Did you hear any of the beginning part? All right, take two. So the autumn, the auditorium seats are currently being installed. Followed up, those will be completed by the end of the week. We're then going to transition into installing the drapes in the carpet, which will also be completed by the end of next week. So most and all of the contract work is going to be completed by the end of next week. This also includes the theatrical lighting, which has been started up and some very initial owner, owner training. They've also tested the theatrical audio system as well as the audio system in the gymnasium. So by the end of next week, the auditorium is going to be in great shape. Over to the kitchen. The kitchen, we have scheduled the Department of Health inspection. So that inspection is scheduled for August 16th. That'll allow the district to actually start having operations in the kitchen in preparation for school. Also, another inspection that we have coming up is our final inspection by BOSI's. We had a partial inspection earlier, a few weeks ago. This final inspection is for the remainder of the building, which is the kitchen, the cafeteria space, as well as the remaining spaces on the first floor that include the auditorium, instrumental and the ELA rooms. So, and we are in great shape in order to complete all the work for that inspection on the 31st. Up on the third and second floors, the school closed those areas off over the weekend. And we were actually able to get those floors sealed and waxed. That's complete. We actually walked those floors today. They look great. The district overall has started to move in and transition their teaching materials as well as office staff on the first floor and third and second floor. Our commissioning effort is continuing. That'll be completed by the end of the week. One thing to note is that, and we mentioned it in the monthly report, is while commissioning, we discovered a manufacturer defect in the chilled beam units, which are located in each room. It had to deal with a condensation pan. Currently, we're roughly 65% completed with that replacement. And within the next two weeks, those will be complete. And we will start up the air systems again roughly towards the end of the week as these systems become, become live. So we need roughly 40 or 50% of these chilled beams to be functioning in order to start the chiller and run it through its paces. So just to put it in perspective, we are roughly 60 to 70% complete with our commissioning efforts. So we will easily meet the benchmark for our E31 BOSI's inspection. Another prerequisite for that inspection is also fire alarm. So we are fire alarms completely tested out. That includes the interface with the HVAC systems for ductwork shutdowns as well as the interface with the sprinkler system for flow switches, tamper switches, and the fire pump. So are there any questions on progress or individual items left for construction?
Hi. I'm Paul Stedman. I have a question with regard to the fire. Fire system with regard to, we already tested all the water. I'm concerned that we're still trying to balance the water system and the fire system. I'm worried that we can't open the water out of the new basement, all of the new floors. How's that?
It was tough to hear the question, but I think it was a question regards to, was it the fire system versus the balancing of the water system?
Well, I'm really concerned about the fire system.
Yes, so the sprinkler system is 100% tested. It is pressure tested as we went along in construction. So the possibility of leaks, that, that system has been fully pressure tested and it's actually active currently as well as the fire pump. So our system is live. If we set off the, if we set off a smoke detector or a heat goes off, the fire department will be notified and the sprinkler system will work.
I gather that. If we can, I do feel concerned what would that. If in the case of saying, the sprinklers, if they're, they're possible. We certainly want to sprinkle all of them.
Brian, did you understand her question?
No, is it a question if, if we could set off the sprinkler system accidentally because we're still doing construction?
Correct.
Corrective.
Correct.
How do we go through and do the testing was part of Paul's question?
Okay.
How do you test and know that that head is actually going to work? I mean, you talked about pressure.
Yep.
But how do, how do we test it? And yes, if we accidentally set something off, are we going to have sprinklers spraying water all over the building?
That is, that is always a risk when working around live sprinkler systems. At this point in time, the work that we have left, we're not up in ceilings. And the people that are up there have been around these sprinkler systems before. The sprinkler works, there's a little glass ampule that's in there. And if it shatters either by force or by heat, which makes it burst, that makes the sprinkler flow with water. So it's exercising caution when working around these systems, which is uncommon in construction at all. The way that we test the system to make sure that they work, we don't actually go in and test an individual head. What we do is we pressure test the system to make sure it's meeting its hydraulic pressure calculations that are submitted upon. And then we actually do what's called a flow test. So what we'll do is we'll simulate and oftentimes we'll take a sprinkler head and then it's screwed into an orifice on the outside of the building. And water is flowed through it and that simulates the actual water flow of one, of a sprinkler head going off and making sure and running that sprinkler system through its paces that if indeed a sprinkler head is going off, that we maintain pressure. And if we drop below pressure, in this case, the middle school is equipped with a, a fire pump. And then that fire pump would also have to kick out on a pressure loss, which has all been tested.
I think the more we concerned will be.
Don't worry.
So I, I think the question was that the schedule that was in the, in the board report shows the instrumental room lagging behind, I believe to the 31st. That is because we do have some change order work that's associated with putting a drywall veneer or laminating two sides of it with drywall. That was completed last Saturday. By completed, I mean, the drywall was adhered and the first two coats was placed on there of mud. So they're returning again this weekend so that it can be finished with its third coat, sanded out. And as far as the painting of the space, that space is part of contract work that we already have through the general contractor FAS. The only remaining item and why that is, is shown out is that after that painting is completed, so for forecasting for next weekend, that following week, we are going to go, the, the week of the 16th, we will get the paint on the, paint on the walls. And then we would attach the cabinetry, which is in there, which is a lot of Wanger cabinetry that stores instrument, instruments. So, and the other, I believe under the question was the ELA room, which I didn't touch on in the update. The ELA room is complete. MJ's went through, they had a punch list, they completed that. We turned it over to FAS for the flooring installation. So the ELA room has a rubber flooring and that's currently installed. And the other two rooms, well, that's actually adapted PE, excuse me, is the rubber flooring. The other two are very similar products to what's installed in all the classrooms. And that's the ELA room. I believe it's 124 and 124A.
Give Steve the hard questions.
Well, if, if there's not anything else or any other questions, feel free to shoot them to Steve or Ryan. We'll be happy to.
There, there is one more question, Brian.
Go ahead.
There's a question.
That one I couldn't get. Sorry. I thought I heard teachers' desk somewhere.
That's a class. It is all of the teacher and student furniture onsite installed, ready to go.
Yes. I would say, I would say 90, all of it is onsite. I got a bad echo. Hold on. All of the furniture is 100% onsite. And the only areas that we still need to install furniture in is the ELA room, which is movable furniture and is already located and staged in the gymnasium and the room next door. So it just needs to be.
Steve, is there anything you wanted to talk to us with?
No, Brian covered everything, but I am available with Brian to answer any other questions that anyone might have. Or if there are questions, just forward them through Mike and we'll get them answered.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to seeing the completion. We'll be glad to come to Bridget R with the community schools.
Brian, we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
While literacy mentors to bring the pantry. The way you help me, you're a good parent. A so far, there's a problem that is almost private. We have shown that it's always on the verge of a five to five, every time. The five points you provide on the calendar. Which is loud, a lot of the noise. While it's a little bit funny, it's a little bit more of a. The Latin medical health report is a place to enter professional. And now some of the medical services require management, which is particularly on the side. But ultimately, I'm just surprised. And we have the president's struggle to education and we have some of the challenges of life. Always six to keep a better president, who may come in, take the job, where they have to have children. Physical actions can associate with orders of society, cancer, drug, alcohol, pressure, heart disease, and rewatch your death. The community environment, which is therefore a physical environment, is connected. The individuals who run the hospital department, families and side work, so they're not the ones who are made free. Are all likely to participate in regular. The elderly, the adults, the parents, and the children, and the others. But the point is, you, um, there is a mission down. The critical light on office floor may be seven five, but it's under that, it's a global operation. That is crucial to be allowed to over the potential of death. Also, there are. If you do see, you wait, how many for every other thousand person. 7,100 years of potential life are lost due to the red motion. There are five, around 500 years, unmatched throughout the history of the state. There's a direct correlation between our lack of access to all and to all of the areas of near potential, near potential life. So now with that, we have all information in writing, from the board on most cases. When we generally work for ready to survive, there's a difference in the place. And the damage is usually caused by half the patients. And three parts of damage, now, that we now have a survey. This survey is in the town of New York, 2011. And the statistics, eight, ten, and twelve grades. And last year, I had a report that was reported in the subject. The survey is given after the new income, which allows us to, when we're bigger, we can pass the standards and more than those will get, as well as value return from the cost. The survey itself is based on a lot of research and methods, protective factors model. It would be true that factors probably years, and like productive factors, there's a more than a couple of years. The value is in the model, which is by the new understanding strategy, we have to play it down. Little computer factors, which is a legacy of the ancient, which alcohol and drugs. You really like it, which is the other thing, a year, something viral, that's something to be, and to be like. So sometimes, with the factors, you're very, very poor, or less attention in school, they are very community. And as more of a community norm, we're capable of developing alcohol, fantasy, and fantasy, which will lead to head over heels. Different protective models, it is known to recruit individuals, like the kind of the duty and that is a big year. Increase the relative to the number of factors. In addition, in addition to the movement in regular protection factors, they're bringing out themselves for the use of all the battle. Where we want to have it. If those people, the years, where there's always a pressure to help with. This term, the greatest, you know, that, that, and my best move, I'm going to make a question. There are people that I do want to encourage, to do my best, to tell them they are positive. How much would it be to follow, be driving me to remember? Drive, road, valley, flight, or abandoned building? And how long can we figure this, you know, like anybody, and alcohol, and maybe drugs? And then it's actually not, I'm going to ask you. Respond to these questions, and that, and the risk, it's important to determine overall. So, you can see the people, hopefully better in your pocket. The judge doesn't respond to these, and more than one group of them, and the 21 school years. The number of factors significant will increase, and they can use their problems. Your motivation is to support the fight, you know, the fight of one year of action. We can put the number of factors which is wrong. While the cameras, the way, developing programs, and the three, and the, and the, and the, the most of the. And you need to hire a factor, and for others, you know, you know, the organization to avoid a bigger. So I'll do a review of regional data, discussion. I'll do a review of the factors, and you have the day, it's worth doing in your time. The community school model, it's by community and rising, mutualizing. That's what we're doing here. This shows a wide, wide way that community can listen before you, we trust the hospital barriers they face. So it's a careful. If you can see, this will connect for the whole child and the family. I could be a great support, helping level support, and gain the opportunity. Given one of those, we'll get a fair part right, various senior organizations to meet our family needs as identified multiple courses of data. We have several permissions for mental health support. Self-irritation, community, your health networks, and that's all for school and community, our vision for double. And last year, we partnered with family health, and we served simple, simple rate, a lot of names, a top accomplice, and a strong family advocate. Additionally, when we figure out, so we provide families with opportunities, making family conflict accessible louder. One of the great expenses of both giving us some health support, it's a graphic in the school building, that it eliminated the transportation barrier that we've been having down. We tell the department of community, we provide access to data, which stands for family, the community together. And that is the highest priority. We also partner several local agencies to provide access to the wider area. So we have, we're trying to, and a lot of areas, probably the physical lines, through the energy, through the supply to help. It's opportunities to interact with community members, both national and national business. Which one, like, to, 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 to. I'm going to make a call. Well, for every level of success in community schools, there is a 50 dollar return on social value. This portion does, which is the same for real, the educational agency, of several, there is current data. We're the lead on the elementary 21st year grant, and we're partial with red, see, I see, and lion. My number for high school, 21st year grant, and lion. These grants are meant to provide funding for extended learning opportunities, and to attract, and to. The current cycle of the 21st year grants will add to three years, and we'll be writing again this fall. The mental grant provides funds and services to support students in value and sector of things. We will be, as certain, partial, with no, with no. This grant will also end on 23rd, 22, over the period of buying the fall. And each year, we receive an allocation of $600,858 dollars directly to provide free, free, for girls, to give them for their education opportunities. So this, this amount that we received is actually kind of on your, 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 your house, maybe lots of money on our home. Over the past year, we, that's what we can see for several grants, for community school initiatives. The PJX School Wireless Grant, based in Silver, and, and Habs, Grant, based in North Rose Hill. Those folks are providing, containing a lot of, with the knowledge to recognize, and to see, and to hear, representing alcoholism. And using the tools to use to get help. The alcohol health grant focuses on a great, in respect, if you can do this frequently, by years of increasing attachment, some of the self-regulation skills and confidence. And focusing on physical and mental health. Private projects provide with district with funds to provide here, through social reports, theater gardens, and secondary stores, various things, and it's all be a justice. A dedicated set of numbers that identify students, and build factions for management's site. It's my lane, part of a recent grant, have provision, to institute a school violence prevention program. These grants, funds are designated solely to North Rose Wolka, and will provide for the, the end of alternative learning centers, and also no, no, very good practice. The objective of the grant is to provide a basic state for the people who's, who's dropping off, to find a discussion in their high school, or, or, and building relationships for smaller, more personalized environments. The grant funds social workers, a special education teacher, a full-time school reform officer, as well as their high social, emotional support, very important, yeah, that's a good point. So, all that, thank you. We'd like to share the work that we're doing for the.
It's interesting, in a, in a small cohort, if you have here, we're following, we're here, um, we will be dependent on, we will be in areas where something like, like those training, and to, like, if like self, that's, 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 over time, for that cohort, so we are able to see some, you know, programmatic, um, implementation, and how that affects our data. Self, and, and programs are to be able to associate, and, and that program. Yeah, absolutely, yeah, and that's why we follow the core, whatever other years, or any of the same students, so they're exposed to our programming, how that affects.
Part of the, the camera, and how, how, begins to flow, only, only brain, and then, and, and.
Chris, do you have a ratio of fifteen thousand to twelve thousand? What was that again?
So, that show, um, for every dollar you can invest in each school, it's a fifteen dollar, referring to looking down here, that's not a strategy, so measured by, for graduate high school, actually the workforce, no longer need a customer, the public services apply at the school, so over time, when it follows, the more, the, and that go on, graduate, um, shows that, that's not a, that's, this is people, that, that, that.
Who, who, who would you, who would you, who would you, who would you say that, who does that?
So that one was, um, done by the, uh, the school association, which is so online, they have, they have, the home for all, and they can get something, or tell us about how that matters. Anyone else?
Um, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, anyway.
So it's a pattern, so, so actually partnership, we measure that we look to individuality, and we're actually working right now, that a bunch of, especially supporting, uh, being able to, how is all that information, so, what's family, company, and whatever, right, if you should report that, that would be able to, that could, that, that what are we writing? So, we can look at individual, events, or, or individual community-based relationship, who works with, so to say, maybe, perhaps, I think, for full percentage, so a lot of the type of, you know, their seriously interventions, like, for, generally looking about fifteen, ten, kind of fifteen, the side of our.
That's fun, thank you, for being, getting a little school worker, where the, 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 and, but this was a long, uh, a very, uh, and, and, uh, I really appreciate.
That'll show, not only, um, because it gives you, the resource, help you out, the money, the stuff, so, so, the whole is for there. It's a very weird, yeah, that's going to start with your, who does it, right? So, private project, definitely, you know, which may interest, you can really, so, so, that, and, 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 our, our, mental health, we're, on the program, and, 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 having, on, John, and, and, our students, the students, we actually work for, on, John.
Chris, I have to share the information, but our, our, in any event, our, our, of, of, of.
So, first, we first mention this program, um, we partner with the, the ministry, and they provide, they, for, our, fifth group, fourth graders, who have had that at school, and they, they, they'll do, they'll do, um, uh, close there, and if that actually amounts to the, the out of the community, and it's a more, but also, I don't know, that's big, that's cool.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, uh, leave the ground, where we present, um, Camp Square. Um, the, and welcome to camp.
Introducing, we're like, very normal characters, okay? We are very excited, going out, our, our, with Parents Square, parents and mothers, will be able to receive all district, school, and plan, communication, data, or, or, do the school, compare, gather, or read programs, he's only five, about, or three, or four, you're sure, you're, I, 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 back, and, first, we're also here, which may, is, 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 near. Everything is, so, with parents square, you have to see, that is from where, who, who, the, on the world, and, 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 square, basically all the locations in one place, and you're only, you're still, and two years, two. Now, this is a copy, or a, 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 and on the left, camp side, is the, where the parent, or, 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 and also, look at, or, or, and, 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 so, how does parents square work? If it's a stack, number one, there are school-related news, that's yeah, parents are not, who see, that respond, are moving, and this providing, easy access to all the arrangements that are beyond the plate. Parents Square provides smart awards, with a wide, important announcement, one cap for participating, for all, to, 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 that are free, that's, 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 download the app, free, either, free, either, web, app, or, 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 mobile app, then, log in, to, to, address, or phone, then, they register for this school, that is where, 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 where. Lastly, make sure that you stay active, make sure that you, uh, activate your account, login, and make your, 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 your. So, if you go to, 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 to,
It sounds like that, right? It's, 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 yeah. Or, uh, this is.
If you actually, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're. I remember, frankly, there was another, or, program that, uh, where there was lots of, that, 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 that.
It does, but I believe our, 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 and, 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 I would talk less, so that we got to talk about today, so.
Thank you.
If you're not a parent, can you access the calendar?
Yes, you'll be able to see it. Um, also, we would like to set up training for the board members, get you logged in, um, and show you how to use it.
Would it hurt? This doesn't seem like it'll take a lot of training, but we'll be training the teachers, the parents, yeah?
Yes, absolutely, right before school starts, we'll be training the, the teachers, and we're going to also be present at, yeah, open house for parents, um, and we'll have a lot of communication on the website, and how to, videos, um, there's a lot of information that gets packaged with the software itself, so, we have a lot of resources to use.
You pay a cafeteria, if you pay your cafeteria?
Yes, you can, yes, yes, you can, absolutely.
Is there a shared, a community, or is there a safe area?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You decide, you can just, you know, the files, and actually, it's better than not, so, this, this, why?
Those things are, I, 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 I,
Do we know? Two, and then the four, um, to the creation of instructional positions, and the creation of non-instructional positions. Motion, please, Tina and Jason, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. We move now to the consent agenda. The consent agenda goes through the tab of page eight. A motion to put, to approve the consent agenda, Tina and Isetta. Discussion. All in favor? Our motion is carried. Moving to page eight. A motion, um, for the approval, um, of, um, appointments. Motion, please, Linda and John. Discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. Uh, number seven. A motion, please, uh, to approve, uh, number one and number two, under that, which are corrections. Motion, please, John and Hall. Discussion. All in favor? Uh, motion is carried. Oh, I forgot, public, my, my apologies, we go back to number three, everyone, is there anyone who signed up for public?
Yes, Jeannie Brockmire, she's via Zoom, would like to speak. Jeannie, can you hear us?
Hi Tina, yes, thank you.
Good evening, Jeannie.
Good evening, hi, as Tina said, my name is Jeannie Brockmire.
Just a second, me, and I'm, I'm.
Hi, now.
Try again.
Okay, how, how's this, can you?
We're having some difficulties with, with our system.
Okay, try now. Okay, how's this?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Is this okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great, um, so my name. Pardon?
Okay, try again.
Okay. Okay, how's this? Okay, how's this? It's.
Go ahead, you can try it.
Okay, I'm good to go?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Jeannie Brockmire, and I'm the president of our Wolka Rotary Club. Our entire club wants to thank you for all the efforts you for, put forth to, um, our, our community, and our, the children of our community, um, we thank you for all the support that you've given to our Rotary Club, um, as we, uh, we recognize the students for their achievements through our, uh, Student of the Month program, and your involvement with that, as well as your involvement with our club as a whole, is very appreciated. I also wanted to bring to you information about our, um, Little Libraries project. Rotary has a district grant program, yeah, in which we applied for a grant to make little libraries to put around our community, and we've partnered with the, um, Woodshop Department of your, of the high school, and the Craft Department, um, to build the little libraries with us, um, and decorate them, and we'll have, we have, we'll, we'll have five of those, and they'll be located throughout the community, and we're really happy to partner with North Rose Wolka, so that, um, we can have the students involved in this project, and, um, let them be a part of service to our community. So, thank you very much, thank you, and I really appreciate it.
It's your policy, you have to respond to, um, the public, yeah, that's time, so I will respond, and say, thank you.
I'm afraid I did not understand that.
She said it was the board's policy not to respond, so she's just smiling and saying, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move up there now to our agenda.
I'm okay to sign off, Tina?
Yeah, I'm on the last page, page nine, and we are, at this point, at good news, does any of the board have good news they want to share? Paul?
Well, it's worked a little better, especially with, with our kids, but I want to give credit to Bob and the, or the rest of our team for, we're hiring, we have a, a special one for a senior mechanics mechanic, and then, uh, a whole slew of, uh, positions available, so, these are out of our shop room, nicely colored, and there's a fellow here named Bogard, dangerous name, but, um, and, and, Katie was just, the student of the month in June was, uh, I can't see his first name here, excuse me, uh, son of Charles and Sarah Bogard, what's his name, uh, Grayson, Grayson, Grayson Bogard, okay, so, nice comment here, but another student of the month. I know those who, a bus driver receives the scholarship to become a bus school driver, that's Lisa Nor, and I think we're all aware of that, but, uh, really nice article too on her, and I just wanted to give the Lake Shore News a credit, because they had a really nice, full page article on our student.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, um, we move on to the. All right, um, we'll move on to the superintendent's update. Mr. Poland, you have something for us tonight?
So as Tina's bringing it up on the screen in the back of the auditorium, you know, we had our presentation monthly from SWBR on campus. What I'd like to say to the board and the general public is that we will be hosting a ribbon cutting at Lavender's on August 23rd. So that day has been long awaited and much anticipated and it's finally here. So at 1:30 on the 23rd of August, we are going to welcome our senior citizens in for a walkthrough. Uh, we're planning to give them unabated access so that they can mill about, ask questions. We plan on having National Junior Honor Society hosts, work with Mr. Matthews and Dr. Farin and his team, uh, so that we can have a little tour set up. Uh, so that'll be from 1:30 to approximately 2:20. And then at 2:30, we're going to actually cut the ribbon, um, and welcome the Board of Education and other faculty and staff and any other participants who want to come in for that, um, ribbon cutting ceremony. At 3:30, we'll open the doors to the general public so they can come in and take a look at this building. And then that's going to conclude at 4:45. Invite somebody coming out, uh, to board members. Amanda will certainly send stuff to you. Uh, she's responsible for the information that's up there and the advertisement. We're certainly working with Mr. St. John to make sure that we have, uh, you know, a nice send-off for that construction project and a welcoming into the new school year into our retrofitted 1934 building. So we're really excited about that. It's been long awaited, like I said, much anticipated, um, but I think when the public goes in there, they're going to see, um, some pretty impressive things. And I know there was a question earlier about whether the auditorium seats arrived. Yes, they did arrive and they're putting the anchor holes in and we're told that there should be, uh, they should be completed by Thursday and then the sound, um, system has been put in, so we've tested that out. We're waiting for grapes and the the stage curbs to go in. Um, and then we're into the final stages, so from the 23rd through the 30th, we'll be putting in some final touches. And I know you heard about the fire inspection that's going to take place on the 31st, so really excited about opening this building back up and giving it back to our eighth graders. So they were the last group of fifth graders in that building and they will be the first group of eighth graders in there. So it feels very appropriate for them to work with Mark and have a thorough evening where they can come in and take a look at the classrooms and put their stuff away. Really excited about that and I appreciate Mark and his staff and I also appreciate Gobando and the maintenance staff for what they're doing, you know? It's no small task when you're juggling four buildings in a typical August, let alone shutting down two building campuses, uh, combining them back into the middle school and bringing new furniture and supply bin while, you know, we're under the pressure to open up in a, in a COVID-friendly environment. Which is going to bring me into my next thing, so you'll start to notice that there's a lot of talk about school reopening plans. We were on a conference call this afternoon with the Department of Health and right now, you know, our, our status for the county is substantial, which means that those numbers are, they're seeing an increase in COVID cases due to the Delta variant. Right now, it's between 49 and 100, that gave them the substantial status, so, um, it's not going to alter our opening plan in terms of being back in person five days a week, however, it may alter our plan in terms of our mask-wearing policy. It's very likely that as early as next week, we could be re-instituting a mask-wearing policy for all indoor activities. You know, there, the good news is that based on the vaccination rates and the fact that we have a number of people vaccinated, um, that they are working on trying to come up with a booster to address the Delta variant. Um, and we will be working with the Department of Health to host another vaccine clinic here and, and campus, or on campus, rather, in district. Um, but the likelihood of us coming back to school on, on September 7th, five days a week in person is very strong. That's still our intent. That's one of the questions that, you know, with that last week about when people make the decision, at this point in time, there will be no online, um, instruction offered unless you're medically fragile. Our intent is to offer in-person instruction, follow the CDC and Department of Health guidelines, which have reduced the physical distancing down to three feet, still maintain hand hygiene practices that we did last year, still maintain sanitizing practices that we put in place last year and open our school back up and give these students a sense of normalcy in a pandemic world. Um, you know, I'm pleased with our administrators, I'm very happy with the efforts that they put in. Uh, they're really working hard to make sure that students are greeted with some social, emotional activities, welcoming them back with celebrations that they missed out on over the last 18 months, really take their time to get to know our students, alleviate any fear and concern for our students, for our staff, and for our community. Um, but at this point in time, right now, we're monitoring the the CDC and the Department of Health guidelines daily and I hope to get something out to you as well as the community at large in the very near future as far as what our plans are. So Dr. Ramos has a meeting with state-level representatives tomorrow. Um, she will be bringing back some information towards about that, uh, but as I said last year, we will take all necessary precautions and steps to ensure our students and staff are safe and healthy.
Thank you. Good news all around. John?
Has there been any decision about limitations to attendance and support for grandparents and parents and family?
Only if you're a Penn State fan, um, they're, we're going to limit their participation, but you know, if you root for Notre Dame, we're going to open up our arms and welcome you in. Now, there, at this point in time, there is no restrictions on outdoor activities. In fact, uh, I'm glad you brought that up. The outdoor activities are one where masks are not required at this point in time and they haven't talked about that at all. The one piece that we do have to be mindful of, again, is the indoor activity. You're likely to see our buses back to full capacity, but masks being required at all times, you know, and they have changed up the model. Last year, you remember, we used a color-coded system. This, this year, they're moving more towards a low, moderate, substantial, and high infection rate around the county, um, so that'll be the chart we use. And as far as athletics, I know Mark sits on a chapter five committee, um, and he would bring us the latest and greatest, but I can feel, again, even with our outdoor activities, which you're likely to see, are still the hand sanitizing stations when people come in. We won't be requesting people to give us their, uh, their temperature scans at this point in time. And again, all this is subject to change, but our, our approach is we're going to err on the side of caution and make sure that we keep people safe and it's likely that things are going to change. Um, they've changed since last week when we really started putting our reopening plan together. In fact, there was at one point nothing coming from state in terms of guidance and then this morning we received notification from state as that there will be guidance forthcoming and that's the reason for Dr. Ramos to send the, the meeting with the state-level officials tomorrow. So, uh, before we turn it back over to Cindy, I just want to say congratulations to Sarah McLean, a welcome. You know, you're going to be a wonderful addition to our staff and, and as I said earlier, the administrators that you have working on behalf of the children have done an outstanding job this summer, so we're really looking forward to her joining the team and, you know, picking up where her colleagues are leaving off and contributing to our district in a very positive way.
Thank you. Um, moving on to board committee appointments. You have a little panel in your pile. And it says, I want you to turn to the second page. The top page was a word, Kathy. The second page is the page I'd like you to look at. The, um, the committees as set will be Audit, Isetta Younglove Chairperson, Jason Sloan, and Linda Egner. Policy will be John Bogart. That is current. Um, Paul Stansky. Oh, the second page is next. That's left here. Okay, I started the first page then. Audit is Isetta Younglove Chairperson, um, Paul Stansky and John Bogart. Policy is Paul Stansky Chairperson, Linda Egner and John Bogart. Buildings and grounds is Jason Sloan Chairperson, Tina Reed, and Elson DeKalier. Negotiations is Tina Reed Chairperson, Jason Sloan, and Elson DeKalier. Appointments are, um, liaisons to the elementary school will be Isetta Younglove. Liaison to the middle school will be John Bogart. Liaison to the high school will be Linda Egner. The represent, there's there is not the reopening, so that's a cross-up, that's why that's crossed up. The representative to the district safety team will be John Bogart. The representative to four county school, um, will be Linda Egner and that will be the Board of Directors and the representative to the county legislative committee on the four county will be Linda Egner. And I'm asking at this point for the board to establish an ad hoc committee to, um, update the board handbook. And I'd like to establish that committee, so, um, if you're willing, uh, is there a motion to establish an ad hoc committee to update the handbook? Our board handbook? Isetta, Tina? Discussion? Audit paper? Motion is carried and because of this, it is established, um, that I will appoint myself as chairperson and I'm committee Tina Reed and Paul Stansky. And the last page on that page is just, um, how I, the reasons why I changed some of the positions and how I did it and some of what the, what you would be doing, so that's just for your information. At this time, um, there's no more, um, business for us to attend to, so I will entertain the motion for adjournment. Jason and Linda, um, discussion, all in favor? Motion is carried. Meeting is adjourned.